Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start. All right, I call this.
Work. Get you out of there.
Pledge allegiance. Sherry, could you put your mute on if you're gonna be, um, you need to talk to somebody? Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Divisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. And today we will be broadcast, well, not live, but live on TV, I'm not sure. But we will be on the YouTube channel. We are live on YouTube at this very time. Clerk Wright, would you please call the order, the roll?
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Frazier.
She's muted.
She's muted.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Boyd. On the way. Excuse. There's your bud.
Here.
Black Knight is present, supervisor McNair.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, I'm sure Mr. Boynton's having problems with his computer because like I said, he's spent some time with.
I'm not gonna put this up.
Sherry mute.
Please, uh, executive summary. First of all, we have the consent agenda.
You on your iPad, Sherry, Sherry Frazier? You on your iPad? Tell him that you probably gotta send, you probably gotta send it in the slot. Tell him to put something underneath the back of it so you can see and stay there.
Okay, I'm gonna continue. Today's consent agenda consists of board meeting minutes, prepaid lists, and voucher lists. We have some reappointments today for Amos Grissette, John Haas, and Aaron Sellers, and they'll be in, uh, reappointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. New business today, it's going to be a long meeting, includes discussion of the second reading of an ordinance to limit the medical marijuana caregiver activities. There's gonna be discussion on a special land use for Jiffy Lube that's going to be located at the Myers on Tyler Road. There's gonna be discussion on the selection of ethanol supply to do our water meter replacement in every home, including anybody that's listening's home in Van Buren Township. We also have some additional extras that we'd like you to consider on that contract. And we're going to need an FCC license in order to read all of those meters. So we need your permission to sign a document to go get an FCC license. We have some cemetery budget money that we wanted to do today, this year, but we did not have, uh, COVID stopped it. We'd like to move that into next year's budget and still keep it, uh, uh, and increase the budget by that much next year. We are on a, we're on a plan to upgrade our cemeteries. We have a merged defined benefit addendum, which is just a piece of paper that we do yearly that needs to be signed by the board. We'll discuss that, but we do have our annual exemption for our 20% for our workers for Blue Cross Blue Shield, reducing it to 10% to discuss. And we have, um, a very big day. We have a potential fire chief, David McAnally. The board is going to make a decision on his personal services contract. And we also have lastly a Western Lane Mobile Field, uh, Field Force Consortium, which has actually existed for 12 years, but is now being formalized for the first time. That's all I have. I move now to the adoption of the revised agenda. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion for the adoption of the revised agenda.
Support.
I have a motion and I have support. Do I hear any, um, any discussion? Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Okay, trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Unmute, Sherry.
Reggie.
I thought I did, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Boyd is still trying to get on. Treasure Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. We now come to the adoption of the revised consent agenda. Trustee Miller, would you please read the approval if you will?
Yes. Number one, board meeting minutes of November 17th, 2020. Two, prepaid list of November 19th, 2023. Voucher list of December 1st, 2024. Approval of the reappointment of Amos Grissette and John Haas to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a term to expire December 1st, 2023. And approval of the reappointment of Aaron Sellers to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a term to expire September 1st, 2023.
Can I get support?
Support.
This bud, okay? All right, um, it's consent agenda here and no discussion.
Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
In regards to the reappointments of the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I would just like to personally thank and endorse, uh, Mr. Grissette, John Haas, and and Mr. and Sellers for their, their hard work and their, uh, they've been stalwart members of the board and I truly endorse their, uh, reappointment.
We are very lucky to have them.
Question?
Let the record show that Mr. Boynton's on the, uh, on the call, trustee Boynton.
Hi, everyone.
Trustee Miller.
Do, when you have a reappointment here, do they have to be resworn in?
Answer good, James.
Uh, no, they, I, I do not think so. I don't, I actually do not think, I will double check, but I don't think.
Board is owning the.
Yes.
We'll, we'll.
You're, you're muted, Liam.
We always check the old book. I'm trying to get off of it. We'll check the old book, make sure that if they need to be sworn in, sworn in, we swear in.
I thought it was within 10 days. Yes, please follow up with that. Thank you.
That's a, that's a, that's a negative. We, we, we working on assumptions. Ain't none of that stuff true. You know, it is no, uh, no, we swear in before the, uh, first of the year.
Okay.
So please check on that. I thought for, for reappointments or appointments to the, uh, zoning, you had to have them take the oath.
I say, if we do, we will, we'll make sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so, all right, so, um, yeah, we've, okay, so we're at the voting phase now for the revised consent agenda. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
All right, trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Say aye or nay? Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier. Mute again. Trustee Frazier muted and you're gone. Okay. That's treasure bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor McNair.
Yes.
I think I might need to go get some, some pain for you.
Uh, I don't know what that means. Okay. Um, we're now got the announcement section of our, of our, um, of what we've got going on today. First of all, forgotten harvest, what again was today, again, they were wrapped around the building. There's a lot of need in our community. I'm very happy that we've got this. Uh, trustee Bud is, our share, treasurer Bud is correct. We are going to be doing this till the end of the year. It's two more times. At that time, we're going to reevaluate how many times we need them and how large it's going to be. Um, uh, I don't know what to do just yet, cause if there's this much need, we, I believe we've got to keep on doing it, but we'll have to talk about that. Next thing is our small business grants. The state of Michigan just opened up a small business grant that I want to make sure everybody knows about. Send it off to the chambers, fifty, up to $15,000. It's for small businesses with two to 50 employees, and they are targeting places like restaurants. Um, airshops, movie theaters, bars. Um, I want to make sure that the public knows about this. It just came out today. Uh, that's a December 2nd, I believe. I can't, actually, they're accepting applications through 1:00 PM, December 2nd, from what I'm reading. Anybody that calls the supervisor's office will have what information we have so to get them started, I hope. The chamber should have the information too. I sent it off to them. In addition, um, I do want to say that the Harris Park lighting, we've gotten a lot of positive about the lighting in Harris Park. It is beautiful. If you want to drive through just a little, one minute drive through and see some pretty lights. But remember, Wayne County does have a light fest through our Wayne Countyans, and that's a gorgeous light fest. It's 27 years now. So if you want a COVID friendly thing, go down there, um, visit some beautiful lights. It's spectacular. I have nothing else on presentations. Does anybody else? Oh, I do have one more. Most important one of my life tonight. Happy birthday, my wife Ada. She's, uh.
Happy birthday.
Other birthdays sitting at home. I love you.
You better send her roses.
Yeah, I know. All right. So who's now, who, does anybody else have any announcements they'd like to make?
Uh, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, Mr. Boynton, trustee.
Um, I've got, um, a couple, um, of announcements along the lines also of holiday lights. Um, I, I received in the, uh, triple A dot com, uh, membership magazine. Uh, they have, um, uh, uh, Christmas lights in, uh, Brooklyn, Michigan, which is where the, uh, Michigan International Speedway is. Um, and that, uh, that event is going on through Thanksgiving, through New Year's Eve, uh, with the drive-through circuit that covers, uh, four miles, uh, that includes a lighted tunnel. Um, there is also the, uh, Big Bright Light Show in, uh, downtown Rochester, uh, where they have more than a million multi-colored lights over storefronts, uh, and illuminates the, uh, city streets. And that is from, uh, November 23rd through January the 3rd. Um, and for more, for, for more information on that, you can, um, look up downtownrochestermi.com. And, uh, last but not least, there's, uh, the Christmas Light Show at Comstock Park. Um, two miles of glimmering LED lights, um, that brighten the night sky from November 25th through January the 2nd. Um, and this annual display is staged almost entirely by our, uh, veterans. And the website for that is, uh, Christmas Light Show and light is L I T E S show, um, dot com. That's all I have. Um, announcements, and, uh, these are events, uh, you don't even have to leave your car. So they're very, very safe.
I also forgot to thank, uh, to welcome you, trustee Boynton. I, I was going to do at the beginning of the meeting, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. There was a little, there was a little ghost running around my, uh, my system. My, um, I logged on to my wifi and everything just plummeted right down the toilet and I just went running, trying to get this stuff right, working.
It always happens when you least expect it.
And you got that right.
All right, we're gonna move on then to public. Is there anybody from the public moderator?
I'm not seeing any at this time, supervisor.
Okay. New business. We're gonna move right into it. Discussion on and consider approval of a second reading of ordinance 111720- parentheses one to limit medical marijuana caregiver activities authorized on the Michigan initiated law. One of 2008, the amendments will be section 2.102. The definitions, specific terms, and article seven, general provisions. Can I get a motion before we continue discussion?
So.
Supervisor.
Um, okay, uh, Mr. Boynton, since you came from that world, I'm gonna give you your first one, and then I heard trustee Frazier. Correct? Take your.
Support.
That's correct.
All right. All right, uh, this is Dan Power, right? Dan, come on on.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, supervisor. Um, thank you for the opportunity to go through the second reading of this proposed ordinance. Uh, we do have the township attorney, uh, attending the meeting as well as our public services director, and I think our police chief, uh, Wright is, uh, attending as well. So we all offer various perspectives that have, uh, led to this ordinance. Um, just more briefly than at the last meeting, I will provide a, a general overview, because I know we've been over this once before. Uh, but there are several laws or acts in the state of Michigan that guide the, uh, state direction on marijuana. Uh, under the framework of two of those laws, the, the community of Van Buren Township has opted out of, uh, they've opted out of both medical marijuana facilities enabled by a 2016 law and recreational marijuana establishments under a 2018 law. Under an older law, uh, from 2008, uh, up through this year, there would, uh, have been caregivers that, uh, cultivate marijuana for medical use as, uh, as individual caregivers for up to five individual patients. As of this year, a recent Supreme Court ruling called DeRider versus the Township of Byron has enabled, uh, clarification and opened a, an opportunity for communities to, uh, give a little bit more regulation, uh, reasonable restriction and, uh, purview over the, uh, cultivation of marijuana under the 2008 law. So the big takeaway from that ruling is that municipalities can limit where, uh, it can be done in terms of which types of zoning districts, specifically that caregiving can be limited to residential districts. So, uh, in consistency with some other communities, uh, including Byron Township, which this ordinance was, uh, largely had used as a template. Van Buren Township is moving ahead with, uh, proposing changes to their zoning ordinance to, um, enable the restriction of caregiver marijuana cultivation to residential properties only and as an accessory use within residential properties. Um, this will be something that will not, uh, come with it, a new, uh, registry mechanism or any, any new permitting, uh, except if there's a need for permitting due to alterations in somebody's home as there, there would have been required before. Uh, permits would need to be pulled, but there will be no, uh, enforcement of, um, responding to any issues related to caregiving will be, uh, the same as they've been before. It's just that now we, uh, are limiting marijuana caregiving to residential properties and limiting the area, uh, within those properties to, uh, 300 square feet or 20% of the floor area of the dwelling. So the packet includes a kind of a summary breakdown of the restrictions that we have in our ordinance. And there are, uh, there's a history of the approvals and discussions of this topic. The planning commission held a public hearing in October regarding this topic, and then the board of trustees had their first reading on November 17th. So now we are here, uh, to go over the second reading. And, uh, I can go over any of the details, and if you'd like, um, we can invite our township attorney and and our public services director to, uh, speak as well, but I'm glad to field any questions otherwise.
Are there any questions from the, from the board? Okay, that's, uh, we went through this last week. Basically, nothing's changed for the Van Buren resident that's affected by this. Um, but nobody is going to expand where we do allow this act practice. Okay.
Uh, supervisor.
Hmm. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, trustee Frazier.
Uh, so we haven't had any, uh, since our discussion before, we haven't had any, uh, calls from the community or anything that have been substantial, substantial, have we? As far as for or against this?
No, we've had, we've had one grower want to move back in since in the last three days.
Okay.
So.
But no complaint?
No, no complaints.
From residents. Okay.
Yeah. All right, um. During, uh, no further discussion, clerk Wright, would you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd. You muted, Boyd.
Don, unmute.
Yes.
Treasure Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor McNair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Um, okay, we have a new law. My name number two, discussion on and to consider approval of a special land use requested by Jiffy Lube International on behalf of owner Myers to construct a minor vehicle service use along, uh, with the related site improvements. Can I get a motion?
Supervisor.
Just you Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the Jiffy Lube.
Support.
Was that Miller?
Yes.
I looked down, okay. All right, um, Mr. Power or Mr. Best, or Mr. Power?
Thank you, supervisor. So, uh, we're changing gears. This is another planning commission review, uh, that is, is prompting the action on tonight's agenda. Uh, but this relates to, uh, development project. And I will share my screen briefly. I don't want to, uh, clutter the screen up too much or, or slow things down, so I'll just share it while I go over some points and then I'll, um, then I'll turn this back over to a full board screen. Uh, but just to show you a little bit of orientation of the site that we're talking about, and please do let me know if I, if I break up a little bit. Sometimes that happens when there are graphics on the screen. Um, but the, the proposal that you have before you is explained in your packet. I'll go over it briefly here, and then we also have a gentleman named Erwin Gamma representing the Jiffy Lube development team, uh, on the call as well, as well as, uh, director Best and our, uh, principal planner, Vidya Krishnan, I believe, is attending as well. The use involves a just over 3,000 square foot, single-story, uh, Jiffy Lube building. The building will consist of four bays, uh, which you can kind of see on the graphic on the lower, uh, left image there that the applicant put together, as well as, uh, receiving, uh, office area and, uh, customer area. The use will involve landscaping, including 28 new, uh, deciduous and, and ornamental trees, as well as preserving the existing trees on the berm on Tyler Road. The use will have 13 off-street parking spaces, including four of which will be secured from the Meyer site adjacent to this. Uh, there will be stormwater detention primarily through underground stormwater detention that will then, um, per the township in Wayne County's design standards, release to, uh, an adjacent drain to the site. There is, uh, the site is located at an out parcel of the Meyer store. The image on the top left here, you're, you're actually looking at this oriented so that you're looking south down Belleville Road. So you have the Meyer store at the top left corner, and this site will be, uh, roughly half of the outlot that's to the, the northwest of the Meyer site. Um, the, uh, the site is zoned C2, which is called Extensive Highway Business District. Um, this use is a, a minor vehicle service use, which is a special land use, uh, permitted in that district. The site is also within the borders of the DDA, and it's also within the borders of what's called the core commercial subarea within our, uh, Belleville Road overlay district. Uh, and our Belleville Road overlay district has specific architectural and site design standards to make sure that sites are built. Even if they're, um, automotively oriented like this one, they should be built to a pedestrian scale with good landscaping and site improvements so that they're a approachable, accessible site. So you'll see, um, the brick, uh, used on the building here, the glass, uh, architectural treatments that you might not see at every Jiffy Lube store, uh, as well as some pretty substantial landscaping. The, uh, process for this use, uh, being reviewed is that the planning commission first reviewed the preliminary site plan along with these, uh, special land use requests together. There was a public hearing for those two requests, uh, November 11th. The planning commission recommended approval. Uh, and the second step, which we are in now, is that the board of trustees can consider approving, uh, taking the planning commission's recommendation and approving the, uh, special land use. And then, uh, if they do that, the, the hard work of engineering review begins, uh, more or less. Uh, there, there's obviously some engineering that went into these plans, but, uh, the plans from here will go through a, a more extensive review process, both from our township engineer and through Wayne County, so that they make sure the stormwater design standards are met, um, that stormwater is functioning both at this site and, and, uh, the sites that are impacted by it. And there will be, um, more extensive review of the utility layouts in terms of water and sanitary sewer. And then, uh, what's called a final site plan review by our township engineer and planning consultant before this goes back to the planning commission for a final site plan review. Um, and I'll just say, as part of the recommendation for approval tonight, there are some items that the planning commission recommended as conditions. Uh, I'll go over those briefly. There will need to be a property division, uh, completed on this site, because as of right now, there is essentially one out parcel in the green area, um, in that top left image. And they're proposing to divide this into two, and, uh, it will involve a review by our land division board. So prior to any, uh, construction commencing, the land division would have to be completed. Uh, the, the site is adequately sized to accommodate, uh, two, uh, small commercial outlets. Uh, the project will also require parking and cross-access agreements to be either verified or produced to, um, validate the way this site operates in conjunction with the Meyer site. Um, the stormwater detention will require approval by Wayne County, as I said, but that also includes the landscaping around it. Um, the, the shrub plantings along Tyler Road will have to be verified as being, uh, reaching a three-foot height at maturity. And there will have to be photometric design to show that the, uh, plaza out in front of the site is well-lit, and that's something I didn't actually mention yet. There will be a small plaza out by Tyler Road, which is, uh, another thing that's consistent with the, uh, site design standards of the overlay district, the, the B rod. Uh, and so with those conditions, the planning commission recommended preliminary site plan approval, and they recommended the approval of the special land use. So now it's up to the board to consider whether they would, uh, want to, uh, approve that tonight. Uh, like I said, we do have, uh, Mr. Gamma from, uh, representing Jiffy Lube, so I'm not sure if he wants to add anything. He's, uh, he's welcome to unmute and add anything, otherwise, uh, the board can go from there. It looks like he unmuted, so.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Dan, for the, the, the great overview there. I think you've covered all of the, uh, the high-level items that we were gonna address tonight, but we definitely wanted to express our, our sincere gratitude for, for the staff, um, both Dan and Vidya for, for guiding us thus far in this, uh, in this process. We, we've received a lot of feedback from them in order to bring our project up to, um, the township standards, and that, and that includes more than just the site design. That includes all of the architectural elements, um, that we've considered along the way here. So we really do, um, think that our, our building is a unique building that is, um, in compliance with the township standards. And I'm very much looking forward to developing this with, um, our partnership with both Jiffy Lube and Meyer, who's, who's been working hand in hand with this, um, development. Um, and just quickly touching on the, the conditions of approval that Dan mentioned, we, we are, um, very far along in, in those items as well. We actually did secure the preliminary, um, lot split, the partial division, um, through the township. So it's just a matter of, um, getting the, the final, um, approval at this point, and then are working towards the, the other recommendations or conditions that were outlined, including landscaping and the photometrics. So we will be, um, in full compliance with all items that the planning commission has recommended, um, and are, are, you know, more than willing to address any questions that you guys have here tonight, but just really looking forward to this development.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I, I have a couple of questions and concerns. First, my first question is, the, the way the, the building would be situated on the property, typically the loop places are, you, you go in one door and you come out the other. So which, where are the entrances and the exits going to be located is, uh, in regards to Tyler Road? That's my first question.
Sure, and, and just to clarify, that's in terms of pedestrian access?
No, I'm looking at the way the cars. I'm sorry, it's not, I see the garage doors in the picture, so it's not a pull-through, um, loop place?
It is. So you, you'll have two curb cuts, um, essentially. I mean, they're all located, both of them are located within the existing, um, Meyer parking area. So you can either pull in through the, the curb cut along Tyler Road, um, and just drive in through that first curb cut and then loop around the, the south of the, the proposed building. Um, and then into the, what, any one of the four service space. So, uh, the cars will be situated there while the, uh, the pedestrian walks into the, the actual vestibule area to wait. Um, and typically they're only waiting for, you know, 32, uh, 90 minutes, so it's rather quick, um, service. The, the whole goal is to. So it's rather quick service. The the whole goal is to get them in, get them out and not have cars pulling in and staying there for long periods of time. So they'll be able to exit that same way. Or the the other alternative is if if they do pull in, they can pull in through the through the Meyer parking area as well, through the rear. And that's towards the the southern end of our proposed development, so they can pull in that way. But again, they would still pull into just one direction in the one of the four service space and then ideally exit through the the western, northern curb cut. And then off from there, they can either go, you know, directly through to the the adjacent Meyer gas station or just exit off of the Tyler Road.
I hope this is. Sorry, trustee Frager.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, I I add one more, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Martin.
My other concern is not necessarily with the with the establishment itself, but that intersection that Tyler and Belleville Road is rapidly becoming very busy.
Yes.
I've I've asked about this before and I I know it takes a long time to get traffic studies and and that approved, but I I think that a left-turn light should be at that intersection.
I agree.
And I think that the time that it takes to get that done, I think we should start working on that now, that that intersection. I come through there quite often and oftentimes, especially during rush hour between 5:00 and 6:00 PM, only one car can turn, make a left turn going eastbound on Tyler Road from Belleville Road. And and that's a, that's going to cause a big issue as we increase the businesses and traffic along Belleville and Tyler Roads.
I can see what we can do, but I that we we need to do something correct, but the left-hand turn is not just Tyler or Belleville. And when we first approached them on that, they basically came back at us and told us that they'd have to straighten the whole road out. We thought we were going to get the road straightened out when the speedway came in. Somehow that's a decision. I don't know that. And give me other recollections on what we were doing here when we were trying our first shot.
Yeah, okay. Yes, so the township has been working hand-in-hand with Wayne County and the DDA looking at transitioning the roadway on Belleville Road north between Tyler and E-course into a, having a left-turn lane, a good distance and expanding the shoulders. And at that point, if that project does move forward, Director Ireland of the DDA is probably beginning, trying to get onto the call right now. If that project does move forward in the future, because it's still a very, very conceptual, that issue would be addressed. We've also been working closely with Wayne County on several intersections. This is one of them. As you're correct, trustee Martin, it does take a significant amount of time to do, to convince the county to do the traffic study as well as fund the traffic study. We are working with them. Every year they have a meeting. We interject our points and projects that we'd like to see. I I can bring back a report once I have more information, but I can tell you that this issue has been brought up to the county several times and is part of a current project that we are conceptually working on.
And I have to add one last thing because it just hit me. I just remember this. You're not going to like hearing this, but I'm going to tell you. That intersection is not dangerous according to our police statistics. It has some of the fewest accidents in our township, which is what was shocking to me when I found that out.
Through the chair.
I know one person that got hit. It's hard telling.
I'm sorry, trustee Miller. It it's not a matter of it being dangerous. It's a matter of moving traffic.
Exactly.
That's the, that's the issue, moving traffic. If I have to, if I sit there and sometimes only one car can turn, or maybe a lot of times no cars turn, making that that left turn from going southbound on Belleville Road to eastbound Tyler Road is horrible.
Even about us since the day we moved into this town, you know.
And that's, that's my biggest issue.
Now, I had actually Frazier and then Miller. Mr. Best, you wanted to say something?
I I just wanted to directly answer trustee Martin. That's the whole point of the, the whole point of the project is to facilitate safe traffic movement. And so if our conceptual project does move forward in the future with the extra lanes, working with the county and the DDA, that's the number one goal. So we have been addressing that and we'll continue to work toward that goal.
Trustee Frazier and then Miller.
I think that Director Best answered it, that they're working with the county and in doing everything they can to keep our residents safe. That's the important thing. That's what I'm concerned about, the amount of traffic there.
Thank you. Trustee Miller?
You know, Supervisor, I approached you about this, well, when we first started our last term. And I complained to you about how bad it was trying to turn there and it's even worse now with that bridge out. So some people try and avoid that that spot because it is so hard to turn. And the other route would have been incomplete now because the bridge is out, so that makes it even doubly worse. But your wife even, what, here's, here's what I'm trying to say. Your wife even complained about it to you four years ago and I'm going to remind you of that because she's the birthday girl today. Yeah, so it's been an ongoing situation now for for quite a few years. But my question, back to Jiffy Lube, is how many cars will go through there per day?
Sure, it's actually a relatively low volume considering the, you know, the proposed use. It is a minor service vehicle establishment and it's only projected about 50 to 60 and that's cars per day. And that's based on previous data that we've had for other developments, including two other developments that we have in Michigan area, so not a very high volume.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else who wants to speak?
I just, there's a quick question since Director Best. So you said that the project that you and the, and our Director Ireland is working on with the county, so that's, they're going to include a turning light there, a turning signal? With that project?
The conceptual idea is to reimagine how traffic moves between Tyler Road and E-course Road along Belleville. And with the planning, the new master plan pushing for mixed use in that location and and we want to be able to have safe traffic at safe speeds, but also learning from the lessons of the city of Belleville where we have, where they had the traffic calming in the city that backs up the traffic onto the bridge. We've learned that lesson. We've also looked at what Ford Road has become through development and we've learned that lesson. And so we're taking all those conceptual ideas and lessons and we're trying to put all the pieces together for us to have future development between Tyler and E-course along Belleville that allows proper traffic movement safely. And that would most likely involve a a left-turn light, a left-turn lane for the majority of the length of that section of road, as well as some other road improvements.
I will, I will, because this is an interesting subject that we have had numerous times and quite frankly, it should be re, there are other things that we're not even bringing up, the fact that Belleville Road is not a straight road through there, which causes more difficult. And it makes.
Yeah, I, we could talk about, I guess, I agree with trustee Martin, but we could probably talk about it later, later time. We got a lot of.
I've written, so this is a general, talk about this. We'll talk about all of our sections, I think, that's our idea.
And through the, through the chair, one last piece to the Jiffy Lube. Because of the way they designed their site and because of the planning, the plan, the zoning rules on car stacking, any backups of vehicles and that would be for the Jiffy Lube would be interior on the Jiffy Lube property. So the the cars stack on the interior of the property. They won't, because of the volume of cars expected and the great work done by Mr. Erwin and his team, we shouldn't see an impact to the Meyer's internal road network that everyone utilizes, as well as to Tyler Road with this development.
Okay, so are there any more questions on Jiffy Lube? Okay, hearing none, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Boynton?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Treasure Bud?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Supervisor?
Yes. Thank you. That passed, I take it.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Will be a discussion on and to consider approval of the Etta Supply Incorporated for the AMI meter system replacement projects not to exceed the amount of 1.968115 million dollars. Can I get a motion for approval?
Through the chair.
Trustee Martin?
I make a motion to consider approval of Etta Supply Incorporated for the AMI meter system replacement project not to exceed the amount of 1,968,115 dollars.
And Mr. Boynton on that? I think, I don't know. Director Tater, could you continue?
Yes, thank you, Board. And good evening and congratulations to your reelection and also to trustee Boynton for his new election, so. Yeah, the, this RFP I had put out was for an entire replacement for our metering system that we have in the township. As I've explained in at past meetings and provided information that we've had a system that is is antiquated technologically and has moved on. And so we are, we are now at a point where we need to replace the entire system. We began our gradual replacement effort in order to try to cut down the number of meters and try to do a gradual replacement over time, but we've run out of time and the metering system that we have now will no longer be working as of the end of the year and so as in a remote capacity. And so we we are now here to bring forth this proposal for Etta Supply. As I provided in the information, there were three bidders and they were three major bidders. The three major companies that would have had interest in our township, from Neptune Meters, Center Meters and Census, Ferguson being the company that that franchises Neptune Meters, United Systems, which took over the old Itron system and and is now using Center Meters and Etta Supply, which provides Census. All three of them come with good, high products. The difference came down to what we were looking for in the township and the cost that came across with this. And as you can see, Etta Supply came across with the lowest bid and it's thus, this is the, this is the bidder that I would recommend to the board to accept. If you have any questions about this, please ask.
I would like to wrap in the next issue of the 135,000 dollars extras to the system into this discussion. Could you consider you with that?
Sure, sure. If the board will note that in the packet, there was a list of with the pricing. I don't know if you can see that or not. Oh, behind me here is the meter that we will be purchasing if the board approves that. I thought I'd put that up there so you could see what it would look like. That's, that's the census meter that will be installed in homes and businesses in Vampiria Township. There on this list, you'll see on page two and page three, items that I've highlighted in yellow for you. And those items are under the optional pricing. These are items that are being offered to us now. It would be part of later work that we would inevitably be doing in the township, including having annual maintenance agreements with Census for our system. And so what they've done is they've included this in the optional pricing, giving us what their costs would be right now if we were to purchase it. And this was, as I included in my memo, I've offered this to the board as a separate item because it's, it's not part of the core project, but it might be something the board would consider in terms of saving some money down the road because there's going to be an estimated 5% to 7% increase in cost by the time we get around to purchasing these items. And they're, they're selling us these items to us now at the present-day cost to save us those additional costs. I estimated that this would probably save us somewhere in the vicinity of around $10,000 if we went with the optional pricing items today.
It's the administration's point that we have the money in the bank. We're ready for it. Paying a $2 million bill hurts. Paying a $2 million bill and then coming back a year later and saying we need 135,000. I feel it's better to ask the board at this time, just to root the bandaid off, get the thing done and move on.
Yeah. And the, and and the, while we're moving on to the other item is the spectrum agreement for the FCC licensing. What this does is there's no cost to the township, no other obligations, other than to co-sign a lease agreement that Spectrum will have with the FCC so that we will have a specifically identified bandwidth for our, for our radio reads. This is what we'll be able to use in reading the the meters through our our collector and we'll be able to collect all that data through that bandwidth and it'll be exclusively ours, as long as we're using Census meters.
As usual, the any bid over $20,000 has to be approved by the board. The 130, those, those two contracts and getting FCC license is absolutely board purview, so we're asking approval.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Um, so how often do we change these water meters? And, you know, in the township, how often is that necessary?
Well, this system was first put in place, I believe, around 2010 and Sherry might be able to, 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 you know, validate that, but I believe it was around 2010. The problem with the existing meters that we have now is that they are no longer functional, no longer functional with the system that we have. And the system that we have is now, it's it's going out of service. It's not going to be supported by the company any longer and we won't be able to use it to collect our meter readings. So with the meter that we have in place, if it was functional for other systems, this meter probably would last us a few more years and we could then continue a gradual replacement and migrate into a new reading system. But because these meters are not compatible with any other systems technologically, they're really useless to us at this time, other than to, like I said, we can get reads now, but we're going to need to replace it. So if, the bigger question is how long do these meters last? Their effectiveness should last anywhere between 15 to 20 years. But what I would recommend for the board is to consider in the future that as we move forward, we we do a major replacement. I would say that we should start looking at replacing meters within that 10-year window so that every year you're beginning to gradually change meters out and you don't have a massive meter change at the end of that 20 years or so. And you do that gradually and build it into your capital budget.
When are the, when are the current meters going to be no longer supported?
December 31st of 2020.
Huh?
Yeah.
This year?
This year? This December?
Yes.
For the residents?
We can, what we'd have is we can, we can collect the reads off the system as we drive by. We have the equipment to do that, so we can do drive-by readings and collect it for our billing purposes. But we are no longer going to be able to use the the collectors in order to gather it through the, through our collector system.
Well, this, oh, through the chair. Won't this require more additional man-hours because you can't read them the way you used to?
Will be.
How long of a period, Jim, between December and what is the the month where they'll all be replaced? So we're not paying, I take it we're going to need overtime?
Well, what, here's part of the thing. Because we started doing a gradual replacement, we have approximately 7,800 meters or so in the entire system. We've already replaced over 1,200, 1,300 of them with newer meters. And that we can use. We've also installed a temporary collector so that we can collect the readings for those meters. The the remaining meters, the remaining ones that we have, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be doing drive-by so that we can actually, we have the equipment. We don't have to stop at every house, but what we can do is we can drive down the street and collect the reads as we drive down the street. And and we'll be doing that until we can get all the other meters installed. So gradually over the next six to eight months, which is what this project's going to take us, we will be collecting our reads utilizing staff to do that. We're going to have one or two dedicated staff that will be doing our reading collections. We're going to have, uh, one or two dedicated staff that will be doing our reading collections. We'll have them scheduled so that we'll be doing it probably, uh, two weeks out of the month that we'll be doing this, the reading, but we've got it handled and I don't think it's going to require a huge amount of overtime in order to collect those reads.
Um, and my next question is, if we already have some of these meters replaced, how did we do that before we considered approval of this replacement project?
We did, we did a gradual replacement, we did a gradual replacement over time. So over the last two and a half years, we've been anticipating that we were going to end up losing our system, so we began building it into our budget as far as a regular item that we need for inventory. And we've been changing them out as we can, um, such as if we do have a meter that goes bad, we have no meter to replace from the old Itron system, so we've been putting in the newer meter in order to get us to the place where we can at least have a functional meter in place and can read it.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
So, this just seems like, what are we here for, Jim, uh, our Director, uh? If we didn't agree to go with this system, then all the 17,000 or whatever you put in would be of no use. So you've been buying new equipment?
All along, for years.
All along, without the Board's approval. If we're going to change.
We've approved every one of those.
Um.
You approved them all, you approved them in the budget. You have a capital outlay and water and sewer.
Yeah.
Which is used to, which is used to buy meters. We buy the Itron meters, uh, but they don't, they, the ones that sign us aren't going to be any good, so we went to a generic that we knew we could make work with whatever we needed in the future. And that's what we've been changing out for the last two years, knowing that sooner or later, these people were going to cut us off. Well, they kind of surprised us about three months ago when they said, oh yeah, we're cutting you off at the end of the year. Well, thanks for a lot of, a lot of warning and we quickly went to the Board and asked your approval to put out this massive bid.
Through the Chair. Through the Chair. So why are we, first of all, it's either poor planning on our part and why are we dealing with a company that is going to cut us off and force us into buying their equipment?
We're not buying their equipment, we're, we're, the, the company that we're proposing here is not the company that we have in place right now. The company that we have in place right now no, no longer offers the equipment that we're using.
I agree, I would never do business with them again.
Hold on, we're using new equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Quote, that has not been approved by the Board.
But it was in capital outlay.
No.
But it was in capital outlay.
Yeah, it's all been approved through the capital outlay, when we put in a budget for the last two years, we've put a capital outlay item for meters. And, and it's been a part of the regular budget that you guys have approved every year. And that's what we do.
Uh, most of these meters that we're replacing are meters that are broken, they break all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of replacing with the Itrons, we've been replacing with this new generic one, assuming that sooner or later, we were going to have to make a massive change out.
Well, it would have been good to lead with that, that they were broken and you're replacing them, because it sounded like, it sounded like that you were going ahead replacing them and even though it was in capital outlay, you still have to get Board approval. It doesn't mean that you can go ahead because it's in the budget and go ahead and, and buy them, but I understand if they were being replaced, but again, we're up against a, a wall here in a timeframe.
Sometimes, sometimes we replace good ones, if we were in a building that had like four meters in it and we had a bad meter and we, we had access to the building, we went after those other meters.
The meters, the meters that we've been replacing have been the meters that are no longer serviceable and they can't be replaced with the existing product. And we, we had to find another meter, now, I wanted to get a meter in here, as I've been saying for the last several years, I want to get a product that we can interchange with different types of, of technology. And the meters that we've been installing is, 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 is of the same type of meter that fits in. In fact, the meter that we've been installing, the 1,200 that we have in place right now, um, are technologically able to integrate with this new census system. So we don't have to go and replace those new meters that we've put in, they're already there and they can be used with the new system.
Through the Chair.
Yeah.
Director Taylor, I look, how long do it take to, uh, change out a meter? With respect to time and, and, and in and out of the home?
Oh, well, I estimate that they'll be able to use, they'll be able typically to get in and out of home, uh, they'll be doing within an eight to 10-hour day approximately, you know, 10 to 14 meters a day, uh, each installer. So, um, so you figure that probably under an hour that they would be in the house. Maybe some would be 20 minutes, 15 minutes, it depends on how accessible the meter is in the home in order to get in.
Through the Chair.
We, hold on.
Go ahead.
We haven't had any, we, we exchanging them, well, we haven't started exchanging the new ones yet. So we, you don't, you don't anticipate any problem getting any people home with this, with the COVID?
No, no, the, the comp, all the companies had to have, uh, plans to address the COVID issue and put safety, uh, measures in place, which they've all done, uh, that made the bid proposals, including the Census Company, Aetna.
Do they have a plan, do they have a plan in the proposal?
Yeah, so they're all prepared, yes, they're all prepared. And we're going to be sitting down, if the Board approves the contract, we're going to be sitting down with them and working out the details of how we're going to implement this, uh, with them, so, but they've all, they've been doing this, they've been working in some of the other local communities already under the COVID restrictions and so with all the safety measures in place. So, um, they're, they're familiar with what they're going to need to do.
Through the Chair, so what other communities have used them, a, around here or?
Yeah, yeah, um, Wayne, Wayne, Westland, Canton, they have, Livonia has census meters. There's a lot of, uh, communities that utilize this, this is a, um, well-known product, it's a Michigan-based company. Um, and I think that their warehouse is located in Westland, so they're pretty close to us in case we need anything on a short-term basis.
And it's open architecture, right?
Yeah, it's open architecture, so it's compatible with multiple systems. That's what we've been shooting for, for the last several years.
Okay.
Through the Chair, so if we change to something else, this will probably be compatible.
Yes, yeah, let's say for instance, let's say for instance, um, the collector system doesn't work anymore here, which I don't anticipate, but let's say that happened. The meters that we've installed work with the majority of other systems out there that we would have to look for and purchase. So there may be some other non, uh, I mean, some very limited proprietary systems that wouldn't work with us, but they won't work with anybody but a specific meter, but most of the companies are going to open architecture because that's what makes sense.
Okay. Alright, so we, so we only have one motion for approval right now and we'll leave it at that, we'll take these three separately. So currently we have a motion by, um, excuse me, my apologies, where were we?
Uh, the motion to approve.
Was my, uh, by Trustee Martin and supported by Trustee Boynton. Um, for 1.96 billion dollars with Aetna Supply. Clerk Wright, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Boynton?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Treasury Bud?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, this next item is?
Uh, Supervisor, I have one question for the Director. So this should last another 10 years approximately?
I would, yeah, I would say easily, I would say you're looking at a good 10 years out of the system and a good 15 to 20 years out of the meters.
I was going to say, I'm thinking 20 or 30, but, uh, okay.
Well, what you want to do is make sure, especially with your larger meters, what you want to make sure is that they're efficient. So, beginning at the 10, 10-year mark, they begin to lose their efficiency and that means that you're actually collecting less of the water that you're selling to customers, so.
Okay, alright, so this next item has already been discussed, this is the 135,000 dollars for additional work uh, to be added onto the $2 million project by Aetna Supply. Can I get a motion for approval?
Supervisor, I make a motion on number four, discussion on and to consider approval of the purchase of optional meter project items for the A, uh, AMI Meter System Replacement Project from Aetna Supply Incorporated in the amount of 135,075 dollars.
Can I get? With support?
Support.
Trustee Boynton. I don't believe we have any more discussion on this. Hearing no further discussion, Clerk Wright, would you call roll?
Uh, Trustee, Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Boynton?
Yep.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Treasury Bud?
Treasury Bud?
You're muted.
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes, please, yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you, this next item is to get our FCC license signed, uh, the application and get it rolling. So can I get a motion for approval and could you read it, uh, Trustee Martin, you haven't done one in a while?
Uh, I make a motion to approve the lease agreement for FCC. F, it should be FCC license with Spectrum.
Yeah, FCC.
The paper says FFC, so it was a typo, but I know it's FCC.
Okay, can I get a support?
Support.
Okay, alright, um, hearing no discussion. Clerk Wright, could you please call the roll?
Yes, for me? Treasury Bud?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Boynton?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I want to, uh, I want to thank the Board for the approval of these items, um, we're going to do our best to get these in, uh, close to six months as we can. Um, and we're going to maintain the reading that we have at this time and I, and I do want to say that, um, the concerns that were raised by the Board, I do understand, but I want you to know that at no point, no time, uh, was there ever an intention to try to bypass the Board in terms of, of these items. And, uh, if there was anything on my part, I should have maybe made it more clear in the, um, in the presentation of the Capitol, but, um, other than that, you know, I just wanted the Board to know my intentions have always been above Board, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
We know that, thank you.
Through the Chair.
Alright, yes, Trustee Martin?
Uh, Director Taylor, when, uh, upon approval, we've approved this, when do you anticipate the work may begin?
Uh, probably not until after the first of the year to be realistic, what we're going to do is we have to meet with, uh, Aetna, sit down with them and begin the plans for how we're going to draw, we're going to identify the different neighborhoods that we're going to be, begin the installations. But the first thing that has to happen is that we're going to be putting in the collector software, so it's going to take us a, a few weeks to get, with the holidays coming up, to, uh, get the FCC license, uh, paperwork submitted and, and, uh, and then begin to plan to have the collector installed and that's where we're going to start, so the meters realistically probably won't begin the installation until after the first of the year.
So maybe early spring?
Or early January. We'll start, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll start installing meters in January.
Okay.
And we hope, hoping that I'm done sometime in June or July, that's, that's the target.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so we're going to move down the line and number, uh, we're at six. Can I get a motion to consider approval of moving the cemetery, uh, capital from this year to next year?
Support.
Trustee Frazier, you want to read it for us?
Uh, I don't have it handy, right?
No, Rob, I'll read it, I'll read it.
You want to read it?
I need, I need support also, Ms. Miller.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so I have a motion for, uh, for approval from Frazier, uh, Trustee Frazier, supported by Trustee Miller, to consider approval of an amendment to the 2020 amended and the 2021 approved cemetery budget that would transfer $25,000 from this year's 2020 cemetery capital fund to next year's 2021 capital fund and add it to what we've already approved. Uh, Director Best, are you going to be bringing this one forward? You're muted. You're muted.
Yes, thank you, Board of Trustees, uh, today I'm bringing a request uh, to you to consider the approval of an amendment to the approved tw- fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 cemetery budget that would transfer $25,000 from the fiscal year 2020 cemetery capital budget to the fiscal year 2021 budget. As you read in your packet, the, uh, activities that were originally projected to be done in the township cemeteries were projec- were about $30,000 worth of work. However, due to the COVID-19, uh, stoppage in, uh, construction activities, the contractor activity was postponed for, and other priorities were assigned to, to staff to make sure for the COVID response and other things. Um, staff still is working with its contractor, Natural Community Services, uh, to do the projects that are remaining to be done with that remaining funds, however, it's not going to be able to be done in fiscal year 2020. So, the remaining, we're proposing that the remaining 25,000 in budget that was budgeted for 2020 for the same use for the improvements in the cemeteries will be transferred to the 2021 budget to be utilized for the management of the vegetation with Natural Veg- uh, Natural Community Services and the repair of the fencing along the cemeteries. Uh, so though, we've actually repainted fencing already this year on some of the cemeteries and then we're going to be adding fencing next year in some of the cemetery areas. Um, the vegetation work and calls, uh, involves a massive overhaul of, uh, the vegetation and proper management, including tree trimming, pruning, removal of invasive species, the treatments of stumps and replanting and significant amounts of mulching, so we are going to put a lot of improvements and, and make our cemeteries even better than they were before. Uh, at this point, uh, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you may have.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Supervisor, I just want to comment that, you know, I think our cemeteries are re- reflection of the quality of our community. And I think it's about time that we get a handle on taking care of our cemeteries on a efficient basis so that they don't get in disarray. And I appreciate our, the work that's going to be done.
Great job.
It is, when we came in, this Board was, had about a $10,000 budget a year on cemeteries and quite frankly, the first thing we had to look at was raising it just to cover the mowing of the lawn and, um, a couple of people, I think Longstreet was one of them, but they, they noticed how bad our cemeteries were and our residents pointed it out, we realized that this Board realized that, I think it was two or three years ago, we started beefing the money up, I think it was 10,000 the first year and 15 or 20 the second and I learned there are another 20, probably two or three more years, we're going to need to get these things back in, under control, but um, it's a big effort, thank you, Matt, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, I'll, um, Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me.
Trustee Boynton?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Treasury Bud?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll say, I get caught up.
Number seven.
Oh, thank you. Okay, discussion and to consider approval of the purchase of a 2021 Ford Explorer from Axon Ford in the amount of 28,800 dollars to be utilized as a fleet vehicle assigned to the Supervisor's office.
Supervisor, I make that motion?
Thank you.
The Board?
The Board, Boynton. Okay, um, I, I don't know, yeah, normally fleet is handled exclusively by Matt Best. I will make the, I will, I will, um, my beautiful little black tourist died, uh, it died, uh, over, overheated and it's going to cost more money than the cars worth probably times two to fix, just overheated, simple little thing.
You're just hard on cars.
Supervisor.
You know, man, everybody knows that.
Through the Chair.
You know, I just, there's, there's just nothing else in the fleet to drive and nothing, um, we've got, we've, we don't, we widowed this group down to not much. So I, I tried the F-150. So I tried the F-150, it just does not work trying to drive one of the old F-150s. Ladies cannot get in and out of those. I had a lady about my age bear of a time getting her in. And a lady that was much younger than I, in high heels, and I did not realize how dangerous those things are. She almost broke her leg trying to get into that thing. Then drove it downtown. They had to be reparked two or three times. When I realized that the city Detroit measured parking spot is two feet shorter than that. Oh.
Wow.
As much as I love driving one of the old F-150s that are laying around here, I can't. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Since I'm the motion maker, I think I'd get first crack at that. So before you were driving something that died, we get that. But I thought at one point you were taking mileage. I know.
I do exactly what the past supervisors have done based upon the recommendation of Plant Moran. What they do is they basically, they determine how much the vehicle's worth, what the depreciation is, and what the mileage percentage is versus what I use and what I don't use.
And so this is more economical is my point than having to pay you mileage when you go on trips, correct?
Much cheaper.
That's what I'm trying to get at, Kevin. Okay.
Yeah, I would make, yeah, I would do very well.
All right, thank you. But there was a price change, Director Best, was there not? It wasn't very much, but.
So, so when, when we first got the quote, it was right before the holiday. And Atchison gave me a window sticker for a vehicle that was pretty much the exact same vehicle he was going to try to find to meet our requirements. And, but that one was a color that we weren't, we didn't want to have, so we had to find one of the color. And what it, what it changed to was it went from the amount quoted in the, the original window sticker to, or his original quote, not the window sticker, but the original quote, to $85 more, which it ends up being, so the motion that you made will have to be adjusted, ends up being 28,917.
Okay, I want to correct that motion for that, that figure. And could trustee Boyne second that correction?
I did.
Okay, terrific. So this, this vehicle will not require a step ladder to get in it, correct?
No, but that's what I was recommended to get, is a stool for the lady.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions, Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Boyne.
Yep.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Treasury Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next item is number H. Motion, motion to consider approval of the MERS defined benefit addendum. All right, hold on. I want to talk about this for a second. This is actually, okay, so what this is, is it's a document that Clerk Wright tells me we sign every year. All it is, is that MERS, their records, found out that we had, that they are missing a document that basically says, how do we pay our people when they retire? They wanted us to fill it out, we gave it to you, and they want us to sign it. And Clerk Wright cannot sign it without your permission.
All right.
Correct, Clerk Wright?
Yeah, it's close enough.
Okay, so it's, it's.
It's just, it's just a rec, it's just a, yeah, it's a
Housekeeping.
Recoup of the addendum that they do for MERS for the pension. And they do, they just, it's an update pretty much. He's correct. They need to update their records. Hasn't been done in a while, so this is update, can't be done without our approval.
Can, supervisor, can I make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Discussion on and to consider approval of the MERS defined benefit addendum.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay, Boynton. Okay, thank you. I would have put this on the consent and I understand more about it, but I, this was new to me, so.
Well, it's the first time too.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have support. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Yes, for me. Treasury Bud.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Boyne.
Yep.
Supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. This one I do remember vividly. Discussion and to consider approval of resolution 2026 annual exemption, the opt-out from the 20% Blue Cross Blue Shield paid by all government employees to make it 10%, which was negotiated years ago-ish in order to get rid of the MERS, which we just talked about, Blue Cross Blue Shield that cost about as much.
So move.
Support.
And Miller. Okay. Again, I don't know that anything needs to be said. We've been doing this for eight years. Our employees gave up the MERS, we gave up, we split the 20% between the two of us. Is that correct, Ms. Bud? Yep.
It was just like yesterday that we did this.
I could just add that, yeah, we are, we agreed to do the 10% instead of the 20%, and we also do other things to compensate for the, I'm not going to say lost, because we actually, we actually do better by doing the the other plans associated with this. And I let Nicole, maybe you want, you want to go ahead and, and, and do a recoup of all the plans that we do according. Also with the last one we just initiated.
We, yes, good afternoon, or good evening, board. We have done substantial amount of reviewing all of our medical plans at this time, as you are aware. We had a huge rate increase at the beginning of the year. However, our rates are still fairly low due to the fact that we have our health reimbursement account through EHIM. I hope that you all will continue in our tradition of exempting our wonderful employees who do you guys such a great job every year in serving you and taking care of all of your needs throughout the year and keeping us at that 10%. So we've been doing this since the Linda Combs administration. And it has been very productive and it's a very good benefit for our employees. And again, I respectfully ask that you gift us this wonderful exemption. That, by the way, is already negotiated in a union contract, so you don't want to violate those.
Well, we support our employees and thank you for the service that you give all of us, so. Nikki.
You are so.
For the good job, baby.
I just add, it's, it's a good program. I mean, the reimbursement program outweighs what we would do if we were collecting 20% from each employee by far. And I've shown that in the last, in the coming years, I look forward to the, the new update. I know last year we was somewhere around 700, approaching 700,000. Mark, and they look forward to be higher than that this year, so that's, that's extremely more than we would be receiving if we were just doing the 20% reimbursement for each employee, so. Just wanted to add that. All right. So.
I.
An upset.
On you.
Okay, we're all set then. We have, we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes. Motion by me, supported by.
Miller.
Miller.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, we have it supported. Clerk Wright, it's back to you. Call the roll.
All right. Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Boyne.
Yep.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier. Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Treasury Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so the next one is COVID. I have a motion for approval. Can I get a motion for approval to move our $60,000 COVID line to 120,000?
I make the, I make the motion that we consider approval of members 2020 minute buddies line item 101, 101, 955000 COVID-19 expense in amount of $120,000 with necessary transfer for fund balance and line item 101, 101, 955001 COVID-19 grand to 58,274.
Support.
Who gave me, Bud, I heard Bud, she's the money girl.
I got it. I was, Sherry. No, you weren't.
Oh, we were doing pretty good there, but we do have some more expenses that have come in, and mostly our attempt to go remote. We bought about 14 more laptops. They're not all in the field yet. We are not 100% remote right now, but we are getting closer. We bought the software. We did warn you that this line in was coming at our last meeting in order to go remote. And that's about where I'm at. Treasury Bud, do you want to say anything else?
Just really to say, it's just a housekeeping act, just because your balance, you can't spend the money if it's not in the budget. So we put it in the budget. We also looked at what other grants could be, and you know, it will more than likely wash at the end of the year, but just so that, to stay correct as far as budget's concerned, we got it covered. So it's really just housekeeping to clean up the budget.
And it really is handy keeping all these COVID expenses in one line item. Because, because we are balancing a lot of grants out there, and it's a lot easier than looking around.
Right.
All right. Any, nothing? Then clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Boyne.
Yep.
Treasury Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We have now come to the discussion on and to consider approval of the personal service agreement McAnally and the township and authorize a supervising clerk to authorize the agreement.
So. So move.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, say that again. Who, who made that motion?
I'm trying to.
He doesn't make very many, but he jumped up right after.
I'm trying to. Yes, I make a motion to approve the personal service contract between David C. McAnally II and the township and authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Support.
Okay. All right, so. I'm sorry, let me get my notes out here. I, it's just, it's not very often that you bring up for a new fire chief, although it was three years ago with Amy Brow. And as everybody knows, Chief Brow will be leaving us at the end of the year. We will have a goodbye ceremony for her at our next meeting, which she has told me she will attend. But since Chief Brow's hiring with Van Buren Township, Chief Brown began mentoring our fire marshal, Dave McAnally. You mentioned him as a potential successor. He has since gone back to college and received his bachelor's degree. He has served admirably as the chief's second in numerous scenarios, including my executive meetings representing the budget, policy, and capital outlays. He has successfully implemented a couple of grants for us. And he served as interim fire chief this year during Chief Brow's absence. Fire Marshal McAnally is wholly endorsed by the Public Safety Director Greg Lorraine, the Chief of Police, Jason Wright, myself, and the two other full-time electors. At this time, I would like to have a few words by our Public Safety Director Greg Lorraine and, and also Amy Brow on this appointment. Greg, you're up. And you're on mute.
All right, we're good now?
You are.
Good evening to members of the board. I guess a lot's been said already by the township supervisor on Chief Brow's retirement and that it looks like unanimously the board has accepted Dave McAnally, our chief in 2021. So I can tell you, as the Public Safety Director, I personally and professionally known Dave for over 29 years. While he worked in the capacity, not only as a fire explorer, public safety dispatcher. He was a paid-on-call firefighter and most recently a fire marshal. I feel very confident that the fire department will be under capable hands of such a seasoned professional whose leadership, character, loyalty, professionalism are without question. It also should be noted, David had received numerous awards in his career. David has received three lifesaving awards during the time he's been on the fire service. Most recently, the one last year that he had on Belleville Road. Not to mention, he was also very instrumental in developing the fire prevention program we have currently in our community. I highly recommend that David be our new fire chief in 2021, so, David, congratulations. I know you'll do a good job and you've, you've got our upper management staff behind you to help you all the way.
Thank you. Chief Brow, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, everybody. I just want to say to the newly elected Don Boynton, I'm sorry that I'm not going to be able to work with you very much, but I'm glad that you are elected and I've heard great things about you, so welcome to the township board.
Thank you for your words.
I, I cannot tell you how much David has grown in, in the last four years since I've been the chief of the department. When I first started, I asked him what he wanted to do in life, and he said he wanted to be the next chief. And I said, well, you got to go to school. And he did. He went to school and he, he got his bachelor's degree. And David has always been able to teach all kinds of subjects to the fire department, which has made him unique in itself, but over the last year, as you know, I was off on medical leave. And, and you know what? Dave took over and, and he took over during this pandemic. COVID-19 hit while I was off. And, and he managed it, and he managed it well. I, when I came back, I told Dave, then when I came back, that, that I was looking at the end of the year to retire. And he, he kept it quiet for me like I expected him to, but during that time, I have allowed him to have the reins. He would call or discuss it with me, or we would discuss in the office about, about different items. And, and then I would say, well, Dave, how do, how do you think you want to handle this? And I'd say, you know what? That's a pretty good idea. Go with it. I, I can't imagine anybody else for this position really think that you are getting a, a great fire chief. It might take him a couple of years to really adapt to everything. But I think going into it, he's going to be great. He's going to be your guy. And one thing about Dave that I've always admired about him is he never wants to let you down. And that's the board, and that's also to Supervisor McNamara. Dave does not want to let you down. He does not want to disappoint you. And one other thing is, is that Dave knows he doesn't want to disappoint me. And that even though I'm retired, I'll be retired, you know, I, I'm, I'm still going to be around. And so Dave is going to work hard for you. He's got heart. He's got dedication, and he actually has longevity. And God willing, that he has good health to get him through the next 15 years, so I can't imagine telling you that I would offer up anybody other than Dave McAnally for that position.
Correct, yeah, let's go, let's do round robin, starting with the clerk.
I would, I'd just like to start by saying that I. I would, I'd just like to start by saying that I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Chief Brow. I can't think of anyone that, that we can, uh, talk about now that will do a better job than Mr. McInally. Uh, I've always been a component of promoting from within, if you can, especially someone that knows the community and not only knows the community, he lives in the community. That's a double. Uh, I've known him for 12 years now. And so I'm going to challenge through some of the jobs that, uh, Amy has mentioned. And he's always been above approach, always been courteous, always been professional. I can't remember not one time I can say that Mr. McInally, David McInally has been unapproachable or I can't remember not seeing him with a smile. So I think he will be an excellent chief. I agree wholeheartedly with Greg Lorraine and Amy Brow. I can't think of nobody that we could present right now to, to, uh, take this job, um, better than David McInally.
Great. Treasure Bud.
Um, I, I guess I've been here probably longer than most. I've watched David grow up and become a very responsible adult. It's been fun. He, he calls me mom. I appreciate that. I appreciate how he always respected his father. And he was the fire chief and his goal in life was always to follow in the footsteps of his dad. And he's done that, he's done that superb. And I know he'll be, um, very good for Van Buren Township. You know, I also watched Amy grow up. I'm going to miss the devil out of that woman, but I wish her the very best. And she gave us the best from the time she started out as one of our volunteers and so she became our chief. She was always one of the best. She's helped to train David. He's going to be the next best. David, I wish you the best of luck and welcome aboard once again to the many positions you've had in Van Buren Township.
Thank you.
Trustee Frazier, could you, would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say our community is blessed to have the caliber and the dedication and the expertise that we have. And, uh, Dave is going to be a great fire chief and we couldn't ask for more. I'm very pleased.
Go across the bottom of my screen, Boynton, Martin, and then Miller. Trustee Boynton.
Dave McInally. You know, from the times when, um, I would sit on a planning commission and, um, uh, come up with some type of addressing or entitlement to, um, uh, really, uh, show off and exemplify, um, your character and everything else. And, uh, they would really, really be over the top sometimes. But I think today I'm just going to take it easy and just say, congratulations, my friend. Um, the township is in great hands. Um, uh, uh, to, um, Chief Brow, uh, thank you for the kind words. Um, enjoy your retirement, um, you starting on a new life and you're going to have a ball with that. Um, but today, congratulations, my friend. Um, I'll save all the, uh, fun times for, uh, later on in the year. But, uh, once again, congratulations, congratulations. Well deserved, well deserved.
Thank you. Welcome to the board, sir.
Thank you.
Trustee Martin.
Well, Chief McInally, welcome. I, I know that you would do a great job. I've seen you. I've only known you for a few short years, but I've seen you in action. I've seen your work. I've seen your dedication. And I know that you will be able to lead this department for the foreseeable future. I'd like to thank, uh, Chief Brow for mentoring you and also for her service to the township. And I know we're going to have something for her in a couple of weeks, but I just want to say that I appreciate your dedication, Chief Brow. I appreciate the accomplishments we have made, uh, in the department with bringing on our full-time fire. And I'm sure that, uh, Chief McInally will follow in your footsteps proudly. And I, I can say I'm proud to have him as our chief. Thank you.
Trustee Miller.
Well, this is bittersweet and I'm so sorry to see Amy retire. But I couldn't be more elated that we have such a strong leader and a great communicator, someone who has drive and determination. Went back to school, got his education, took extra classes. So he's loyal to our residents. He's loyal to this board. We couldn't ask for a better chief. So congratulations. I'm so proud to have you as chief. And, uh, I look forward to our next meeting where we can honor, uh, Amy Brow. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
I, uh, yeah, I've already spoken my piece. I believe in, like, I believe in preparing for the future. And, uh, the last go around, we did consider David. David was, you know, as Amy said, he's got to go back to school. He did. You know, he's got to learn this. He did. He'd be better at training. He did. Now, he's got to learn how to write grants. He did. Um, he's done everything we've asked of him. We've had some very matter-of-fact discussions about what's expected, uh, as a director. And it's, it's nice to be able to have somebody that's so active in your community, somebody that knows the history, has got legacy. There's nothing more powerful than having a, a young, a man like Dave Mc that could actually recall and say, that happened in year 1999 and what happened. But you know, you get that out of him. There's just going to be a nugget of knowledge when he was a fire scout and his dad was sitting at this, uh, table talking about it. Um, and it's very, very powerful and it's wonderful for moving the community forward. We're very excited.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion on this, you have a job to basically anoint, approve and, uh, give him a contract. But we have a motion and we have approval. Uh, clerk Wright, could you call the roll?
Yes, I started to start by saying yes. Trustee Bud.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Boyden.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. I'll see you tomorrow. This is, uh, wow. It was a long journey from dispatch to giving up the union, to going into a part-time fire, to fire marshal, underpaid fire marshal to, you know, please get me this job. So you, you, nice, nice journey. Do you have anything you'd like to say, uh, fire chief?
Um, no, thank you very much. Like I said, I, I definitely have a lot to, uh, to give this community. I've lived here for over 33 years when we moved down here with my father and he became the fire chief. Uh, a long legacy of fire service, uh, for generations. I will now become the third fire chief on my father's side of the family alone. Um, so I think obviously my family has given up a lot for me to do it. And the fire department here, we have a great bunch of firefighters here. So I wouldn't want to lead any other group of people. So thank you.
Great. Welcome aboard. Okay. We're going to move on now. Next item is discussion to consider, oh, this is a memorandum of understanding with, uh, Western Wayne Mobile Field Force Consortium. Greg Lorraine, uh, can I get a motion for approval first?
I'll make a motion supervisor for approval of the discussion and consider approval of the memorandum of understanding between Wayne, I'm sorry, Western Wayne Mobile Field Force Consortium, Consortium and Van Buren Township and authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement.
Support.
Just get, okay. All right, uh, let's continue. Uh, I put down Boynton as a support. Um.
I didn't even hear him. I heard Frazier in, in.
I said support.
So did I.
First meeting, we're going to have to figure something out because they're all going to be on that button so fast. I'm sorry, Director Lorraine, are you still there? I actually don't think I need Director Lorraine on this one unless he is still there. Director Lorraine, could you take this away? Uh, explain why we're, we're looking at this now after these many years. You're on mute. Uh, Director, you're still on mute. Okay, Bud.
There he goes.
Okay, let's try it again. Van Buren Police Department has been members of Western Wayne County Mobile Field Force Consortium since 2010. And it consists of members from several, actually 18, Western Wayne County agencies. This multi-jurisdictional team, um, is comprised of specially trained police officers from these agencies and is utilized to respond to civil unrest incidents that are beyond the capabilities of standard road patrol personnel and lacking sufficient manpower to manage these types of large-scale events or incidents if they happen in your community. This team was established to train, equip and make ready officers from the participating agencies and to be utilized if needed during civil unrest within those communities. Van Buren Police has currently three officers assigned to this unit since its conception. This unit has been utilized by participating agencies over the year to include La Bona and Plymouth Cities in the past summer. Our department has also had this unit on standby during a protest occurring in Van Buren Township this year. Currently, our department, like I said, has three officers assigned to the unit and trains quarterly with a team. These officers are well-trained and equipped to manage large control, large crowd controls during civil unrest and violent demonstrations if needed. Since the unit's conception, there has not been an official memorandum of understanding between any of these agencies involved. And they have been just operating under verbal mutual aid agreement, which most departments and agencies do, local agencies. Law enforcement executives from these, uh, 18 agencies provided input into this memorandum of understanding to officially outline the Western Wayne County Mutual, uh, Field Force Unit and legitimize its existence. This MOU addresses and defines the agency's participation and the team's membership requirements. So the chief's intent in this MOU was to formalize in a document form our communities and agencies partnerships with this mutual aid agreement. So I'm asking at this time for the board to consider approval of this memorandum of understanding and, uh, have the supervisor to execute the agreement.
Any questions? Okay, just more memorializing what we've always been doing. If somebody saw there was no paperwork and created a bunch. At any rate, we have a motion. We have a second. Yeah, clerk, could you call the roll?
Uh, hold on, we lost, um, uh, there she goes.
Yes, uh, Trustee Frazier. Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yeah, I'm sure you're, they're smiling.
Trustee Boyden.
Yep.
There you.
Yep.
Treasure, Treasure Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have no reports today. Uh, is there anybody that wishes to make public comment on, uh, anything they want today? Non-agenda items actually, but. Moderator, is there anybody for public comment?
There is none at this time.
Okay. Does the board want to make any comments at this time?
I have a comment, please supervisor. Well, first of all, Trustee Boynton, I'm so glad that you brought on your very first meeting forward, events that our residents can attend and still be safe. I think that's really important and it inspired me to also mention that the 2020 virtual Canadian Pacific train comes through on Saturday, the 12th at 8:00 PM. And also I think it's equally important to mention that the Belleville Area Chamber of Commerce is having the Winterfest fireworks December 4th, that this Friday at approximately 7:30. I think that's important, Kevin.
I forgot about it. Um, I'm writing it down as fast as I can, um, through the chair.
Yes.
Um, Trustee Miller, I don't want to contradict you, but did, um, did they lift the, um, train from being shuttered in from this year from the, uh, virus? Cause I read.
I don't know your question. I'm sorry. Can't hear your question. What was that again?
You mentioned, you made mention about the holiday train coming.
Yes, as far as I know, that has been announced. I don't know any of the details about COVID, but I know the train's coming through. It, it has been posted. I'm just passing that information on.
Okay. Well, maybe they, maybe they squished it up because, uh, last time I read, uh, they said that it had been, um, it had been, uh, pretty much shuttered. It was, it wasn't going to, uh, travel through. But if you said that it's been, it's, if it's posted that it's going to go, then okay.
And it, it might've changed, but from what I'm looking at the screen, yes, it's still happening and the fireworks are still happening.
Okay, cool. I'll be there. Anybody else? Uh, Treasure Bud.
Through the chair, um, just to let folks know, because we've had a lot, we've had quite a few phone calls. The tax bills are in the mail. Um, and so they, they should be arriving in your homes. You can go online and see the amounts that are due if you need to do that, but they should be arriving shortly.
Thank you for the cheerful news.
All right, um, hearing no further discussions, I call for, uh, support, a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Miller, Frazier, you want that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, I got a motion. I got, uh, support. Hearing nobody in the negative, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Have a good, uh, weekend.